All right, good evening. I would like to call to order the Tuesday, May 4th, 2021 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I do have a couple of chairman's announcements tonight. First one is I wanted to recognize the fire department that this evening is receiving the Central Mass EMS Service of the Year Award for a couple of the calls that they've done here in Douglas. So congratulations to the Douglas Fire Department. As always, they do an outstanding job with what they do and glad to see that they're being recognized for it. The second announcement that I have is not as happy of one. It is Mike Hughes's last selectman's meeting this evening. After 15 years of faithful service and guidance to the Board of Selectmen, he has opted to not seek office again. And I can say I speak for the board and when you will be sorely missed. And we got together, Tim actually hunted this down, and we all pitched in for -- watch me drop this and break it because I'm a jerk.
Yeah, don't do that.
A nice glass.
Oh, that's nice.
Memorial. You want to read that off? Let me since you.
Sure, Mike. I'll be glad to, as someone who has deeply valued our friendship and service together. This is presented to you, Michael D. Hughes, a member of the Douglas Board of Selectmen from 2006 to 2021. He served as the chairman of the board from 2007 to 2011, and then again, 2015 to 2016. And it reads, "Presented with grateful appreciation and recognition of its unselfish dedication to the town and the townspeople of Douglas, Mass., selectman Hughes's sensitive leadership, deeds, and insights will long serve as an inspiration to his colleagues and the residents of our community." The Douglas Board of Selectmen, May 4th, 2021.
Thanks, Tim.
Take that.
Now, I understand why you were asking me those questions.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'm going to miss you all.
We're going to miss you very much.
It's been a pleasure to serve with this board. Actually, I can honestly say it's been a pleasure to serve with everybody that I've served with. I'd like to think that I tried to do what was best, and that was my only agenda. So it's a sad night for me. I'm really going to miss being part of this, but I'm not going to go away. And I really appreciate this. Thank you so much.
Well, it's well-earned, Mike. Okay. So if people want to do a write-in for Mike -- no, just kidding. All right. So that brings us to our first agenda item, which is a meeting with our town moderator and town clerk regarding the May 15th town meeting. And we have Keith and Christine. Good evening to both of you.
Good evening.
What's the line? If asked to serve, I will not.
If nominated, I will not serve.
If nominated, I will not run.
No.
If elected, I will not serve.
Yeah.
I think that was the line.
Something to that effect. So I think for the most part, kind of going through the two -- yeah, there we go. Going through the two different meetings, I don't think there's too much that I really had questions on. The -- you know, one of the first ones is the change in selectman wages. So just ask for a -- well, I mean, that's even -- that slide's even pretty self-explanatory as well, just showing the difference, you know, for year over year. Are we planning on doing the ratification of the -- so, you know, for that reason -- let me back up to Article 3. So for that reason, I'm not going to combine Article 3 and Article 2 as we normally do. Article 4 will be on its own, but then I expect to take Article 5, 6, 7, 8. And then the compensating balance agreements is under Article 8. That's been in there in previous years. Am I correct? I just -- I don't know why, I just hadn't noticed that. Like, something tipped me, and I said, is that in there before? So I just wanted to double-check on that. So Article 8 would also be part of that combined article. And Article 10 -- Article 9 and 10 would be separate. 11 separate. And then -- so then the question is, are we going to move Article 12 and 13 at this meeting?
I'll memorize the numbers. Which were the contracts? The police and fire contracts? Will they be ready to be ratified? They're ready. They've been posted.
Okay, great.
Yeah, they've been posted. I just don't know that I would move them both at the same time.
No, I'm not going to. I just wanted to make sure that those were both going forward for this meeting. Because I know, I think there was one year previous where we're going to put it out, and then we pulled it back. If I could just get slides that detail the changes in each of those. And then, you know, Article 14 and 15, I think, are pretty self-explanatory. That's really about it. I don't -- so.
Waiting for the --
Yeah, actually, it's never quick with you.
It's -- yeah, I know. Like, I kept looking through it, and the mic was just really, like I said, I don't think there's anything really out of the norm. You know, just a couple slides to make sure people understand what the changes are, and that's really about it.
What time are we doing this, 10:30?
10:30. Yeah, 10:30. Hopefully, a nice sunny day. Get in, get it done. Yeah, kind of like the last meeting. We're working for efficiency while not sacrificing, you know, any input into the process. So again, I'll probably read the articles unless there's any objection to that. You know, read the motions for the articles. Just get a second from the floor. As I said, just move everything expeditiously, but still give people a chance to comment if they have any.
Works for me.
Any questions, concerns?
We're going to try doing outdoor town meetings post-COVID. I'm kind of liking them.
Yeah, I don't think anybody likes, you know, the weekend aspect of it.
No.
You know, I would -- I'd much rather be water skiing, but, you know. The outdoorsiness of it is kind of cool. And I'm sure, having said that, it would be pouring buckets.
I was just going to say, it's kind of cool until we get them on soon, yeah.
Yeah, so, yep. All right, great. Hopefully, this will be our last indoor, and we can kind of return to, you know, some sort of normalcy come fall. Great. Thank you, guys, for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Onto the next agenda item. Update on the tree removal for National Grid and the Highway Department and possible votes. Good evening, Mr. Furnell.
All right, so I'm going to -- I'll just break down how it all goes about with National Grid from start to finish, if they're going to do a project, just so everyone knows how it works, if that's all right. So as you -- everyone knows, we've had several streets in town with dead hazardous trees. National Grid's been here probably a year now, removing trees on and off, more on right now. West Street, Walnut Street, Wallem Lake Road, all up and down. All their three-phase lines, which are going to feed the solar farms on Wallem Lake Road and West Street, is what they've been really working on the last four or five months, you know. So they approach us. I know I came before your board with one of the arborists and you guys, just to give you guys a heads-up what was about to happen before we started. So then, after that, the process is they -- I asked them to go door-to-door, because I don't want any surprises when trees start coming down. So what they do is they go door-to-door, they start passing out these pamphlets, letting them know if it's just trimming, it's trimming. They'll leave that on your door. If there's more work involved, they'll drop off the -- a form explaining what's going on, why it's going on. And then you can choose on the form if you want the wood, if you want the wood removed, if you -- if -- explaining how big the stump will be left. The wood will be removed by the town. The stump will be below 10 feet. You could have some lawn damage. And they go on and on and on. You know, with this, you check off -- they meet with you, check off boxes, they have you sign, you get a copy, and carry on. With the size of this project, Matt and I were talking today, it's gone relatively smooth. I mean, considering the amount of trees that have been taken down and the minimal complaints that he's received and I've received, I think it's pretty good, because you know it's going to happen, unfortunately, with a project this big. Some people, I did get calls, were confused on which box that got checked, and the wood was there, and they didn't want it. So I make a call back to National Grid, they'll send someone to pick it up, you know. They advised me, I met with the arborist, Dave Donahue, which I have a great relationship with last Friday, and he said the West Street project, they were starting to pick up today -- this week, I saw them up there today, for the people that didn't want the wood. And that'll be wrapped up within the next two weeks, the West Street project up to the solar farm. He said then, the next two weeks, they're hoping to wrap up the whole project getting up to Wallem Lake Road. So I know a lot of the stuff's been cut up there already, but a lot of the homeowners do want the wood, which I get. And I'm hearing some feedback that some of the wood is so large, now that they got it, they -- it's, holy smokes, what am I going to do with it? So if that is the case, and anyone out there watching, give us a call, we'll call National Grid, see if they'll come. And again, they've bailed me out on several occasions, especially with all the trucks in town. Last week, we had a tree come down from private property, but onto our property, blocking the road, and it was tangled. And there was no wires involved, but they were gracious enough to send a crew out, which would have cost me $1,500, $2,000 to get that tree down on Pine Street. So if there's wood left that you didn't want, give us a call, I'll work with National Grid. I mean, I don't want to be in the firewood business, we have enough going on. You know, we tried that one time with that lottery and that, and it just was a lot of work for our guys, you know, separating roughly a quarter wood. There was the permit, if you remember, you could -- it was a raffle permit, and, you know, we gave the wood out. And if there is wood there, I ask homeowners first when they call me, just put a free sign on it, because there is people, a lot of people in Douglas that want to burn wood, you know, so why not try to offer it up to people driving by? And that happens. And a lot of people put no trespassing signs on their wood, because they don't want anyone to touch it. But if you have wood that you don't want, give us a call at the highway, and then we'll get in touch with National Grid, and, you know, I'll work with them. If I take the wood, we put it down the pit behind the VFW. This year, we spent $6,500 getting the stuff, the big uglies, ground up and taken away, you know. So it costs us money to take the wood, but, you know, the wood's on town property. If the people don't want it, and Grid has come and gone, then it'll end up being our responsibility. So I'd rather do this sooner than later to get rid of the -- to get rid of the wood. You know, as far as when, like we did Orange Street, we did the entire length, we cut 83 trees on Orange Street, and most of the -- 90% of the people I talked to said, just drop it there, we'll take it later on. I mean, there's some big, big trees down there that they want the wood, so we haven't touched it, you know. But if -- but I try to make contact with homeowners, if it's a tree that we're doing, see if they want the wood or how they want it done. You know, they say may want the smaller stuff, not the big ugly stuff, so we'll remove it. But that's kind of the tree cutting in a nutshell. You know, we've just in last calendar year between -- and this doesn't count Stanley Tree that did the Main Street job, we took down about 510 trees. And they were large, ugly trees. You know, the Gypsy Moss did a job on us almost five years ago now. So we're starting to get headway. We've been gracious enough to get -- we get $20,000 annual budget, and then the last two fall town meetings, we got 50 both times. And it's $2,000 a day for a tree crew here. So, you know, it takes a while to get everything down, but we are making headway, you know. So I get a tree call at least once a day. There's a tree call at least once a day for somewhere there's a dead tree, can you look at it? Do I own it? You know, we get on the town's maps, we try to find the bounds, you know. According to Chapter 87, the tree warden, the tree bylaws for the state of Mass, if it's touching anywhere of the town's property, it's our tree. So we take it down. You know, that's how that works. So that's the tree removal in a nutshell. Answer any questions, if anyone has any about it?
So if you get a call, does it go to National Grid to do, or are you?
Well, first of all, we beg --
Huge trees.
Yeah, if it's -- if there's anything to do with the wires, we'll get in touch with National Grid, because they -- I have a great relationship with Dave Donahue, the head arborist in Hope Dale for the Grid. And he's very gracious, but he's starting to get sick of hearing from me, unfortunately. You know, but if it's something to do with the wires, they are gracious enough to take it down, but if it's just nowhere near the wires, and then it's our tree. We form a list. When the guys come, they can take anywhere from two to four or five, six trees a day when they come, you know.
But the trees that are already down?
Yeah.
Sort of obnoxiously big trees?
Yes.
Are you going to be picking those up?
I will if National Grid doesn't, but I just need to know who.
Let you know, National Grid would be the first.
That'll be the first one.
Would you rather have them?
Absolutely, because again, we have to pay to get them ground up and taking them away, you know. And we have to find a way to get them on a truck. If they're that big and ugly, we've got the clam on the thumb on the backhoe, we can pick it up, or we cut them smaller, and we'll chain them, and use -- Adam will grab the loader, and we'll pick them up and put them on a truck that way.
Take advantage of National Grid's longevity.
Absolutely, yeah. And again, they've been very good to us. We've gotten a lot of trees removed, you know, a lot of dead hazardous trees, you know.
Noticeable difference on a lot of the roads.
Absolutely.
It's like night and day.
And it really helps in the winter to get the light in.
Right.
For the, you know, for the snow removal and the salt and melting of the snow and ice.
Okay. All right.
We don't need to vote on anything on that, it's just an update.
Yeah. Thanks.
All right. You're welcome.
We might as well just stay right there, John, because you're the next one, too. So approve highway spending from Main Street Flag Fund. Possible votes. So, and you, let me see, I think you have a $500 donation, you want to spend it on new flags, poles, and mounting brackets, right?
Yes, for downtown area. There is a flag fund as well, I believe there's like $100 in that. It's like $80 to set down?
Yeah, it's around $80.
Well, $80 bucks to get a flag, the bracket, and what have you, and the pole. We'd like to do at least 12 on Main Street Downtown. The ones we had are pretty tethered up and beat up. So for Memorial Day, we'd like to try to get a new dozen flags for downtown, and that's why we'd like to use that donation money for that.
Was that anonymous? Excuse me, was that an anonymous donation?
It was from the Eagleview Condo Association off of Franklin Street a few years ago.
Yeah.
Well, that's nice of them.
Yeah.
You maybe want to make a motion on that? Mr. Hughes?
Mr. Hughes, yeah. Move that we approve highway spending from the Main Street Flag Fund to replace flags along Main Street.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Here you go, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck this season. Thank you.
Okay. So next is EverSource Franchise Agreement and Possible Votes. Good, Bob, come on up. He can speak to this a little better. Mr. Manary.
Evening.
Would you care to fill the people in home, as well as the rest of the board, in on the franchise agreement request?
Well, this is the first step in bringing natural gas to the town of Douglas. It's been months of negotiation with EverSource, and this is the first step. So once this is agreed upon, they will act on it and then return with a letter stating their intentions. Most of this, this gas is basically needed for economic development on Gilbert Street.
It's really necessary infrastructure to make.
It is a required infrastructure. You look at water, sewer, and natural gas as your three components of infrastructure that will support this warehouse. And Matt and I are working on MassWorks grants right now for the water sewer. Discussions with EverSource today, they're willing to help us out, you know, financially and with the drawings, and there's not much time left. We have a June 4th deadline for the MassWorks submit.
So ultimately, what you'd be looking for from the board is for us to
Take a vote?
A vote to move forward with.
Take a vote to show your support that you're requesting gas.
I'll move that we request EverSource to enroll the town of Douglas in the next recipient of natural gas, and authorize the town administrator to send a letter to that effect to EverSource showing the town's support to the Board of Selectmen's vote.
Motion's been made and seconded. I see mention in here of a resolution letter, is that the form it has?
At the end of your packet.
Okay.
So the letter's already been written.
All right.
And I will need the entire board to sign, if you all, depending on how you vote. Yes. That was a requirement of EverSource, so they could approach the DPU. Now, the Department of Public Utilities, they have to approach them with this letter requesting authorization to come into the town of Douglas as a franchise. So you already have the letter, and like Matt said, you'd be, depending on your vote, required signatures.
Okay. We have a move in second.
Yeah, we have a ---- cable in a second. Is there any further discussion on it?
Is there any reason not to?
I can't think about it.
No. There isn't. Particularly if we want to broaden the town's tax base, this is, you want economic development, this is it. Build it, and they will come.
All right. Any other further discussion on the matter?
Seeing.
Seeing as none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Back to you.
Out to my court. That's okay. I'll run with it.
Beginning of September, the building will be up, and we'll be all set.
We're looking for a four-month MEEPA review. There's a lot of review periods ahead of us. I mean, look at Blackstone, we're just -- we're three months into the planning board meetings right now, and it's getting lengthy.
Well, we're glad we have you and Matt working.
Absolutely.
A lot of details here.
That's attention to detail at this point.
Keep up the good work, Bob.
Thank you.
There's a small veiled threat here that, forget to sign it tonight, Bob will go to your house at lunchtime and haunt you until you sign.
I have to wait till lunchtime?
No. That seems to be the --
You missed the other part, is that you'll have at least four phone calls leading up to lunch.
The pre-call.
And three emails, two texts.
A couple of drive-bys.
That's how things get done, Bob. Thank you.
Thanks. We can sign that later.
Yes.
All right. Next up is to approve minutes and possible votes.
So I move that we approve the meeting minutes from the Budget Workshop on April 13th, 2021.
I will second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 So then we'll move that we approve the April 20th, 2021, Board of Selectmen meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. And finally, I'll make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes from April 20, 2021, and retain.
I will second.
Excellent. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? No? Good. You opposed? A little bit? No?
No.
Okay, then. Brings us to your report, Mr. Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything lengthy, but I have a lot of things. First, I'd be remiss not to acknowledge that it was a pleasure to serve under Selectman Hughes for these past three years. You don't realize how important it is to have the dedicated, public-spirited people involved in your various boards and commissions until you don't have that, until you have, you know, people with an agenda who want to constantly rock the boat, fight with each other, and fight with the staff. It's a pleasure to be here and not have to deal with that, and I think a lot of that has had to do with the very level-headed and sage statesman-like service of sometimes chairman, sometimes selectman Hughes over the course of the years, setting the tone for the town. And it was really a pleasure to work with you, and I'm grateful for the town.
Same here, ma'am.
The Emergency Operations Center Unified Command is recommending to the Board of Selectmen that the state of emergency be lifted in the town of Douglas in July 1st with the turn of the fiscal year. We feel that that will give us some time to watch world events and state events and determine whether the numbers will continue to trend as they are currently. But with the vaccine universally available to everyone who is willing to, and, you know, ongoing social distancing and mask-wearing and the appropriate circumstances, we don't feel like it's necessary to keep Town Hall closed any longer or to, you know, suspend events any longer. Many other towns are opening up their senior centers and, you know, small events. It will also beg a conversation about whether or not you want to continue to allow remote participation in meetings. That is your choice. And I believe when you passed the resolution, it was until either the Board of Selectmen lifts the state of emergency, or the governor does, whichever comes first. And at that time, you know, you still have the authority to allow people to meet remotely under the Open Meetings Act, so you'll have to decide if that's what you want to do. I think we occasionally run into situations where people are really not even anywhere near Douglas and continuing to participate in meetings. And then it starts to beg the question of, you know, is that really fair? Is that really the best way to run the town? So food for thought, but we'll put that on your agenda officially for two weeks from now.
It won't automatically terminate when the emergency is?
Well, your state of emergency is kind of cut, you know, changed to the governor's exercise of his authority. I just don't know when he's going to act, and I don't know that I want to wait until wintertime. I think there's, even though we've made huge strides with E-permitting and making everything easy for people, there are still, there are people who need to come in to Town Hall. And, you know, we might up our cleaning regimen just a little bit to make everybody feel safe and secure, but, you know, for those folks who work here day-to-day, they're behind plexiglass shields if they're in another office, in an office with another person, and there's just lots of safeguards being taken. So I think we feel like now's the time, and that was an unanimous decision of the five of us. Today was kind of a big deal for me, because it's taken a long time to do this. But I signed the contract today for the Public Safety Radio Project. It's going to come in at pretty much exactly our budget for it. That was approved by town meeting. That's $754,000. It's a lot of money. But it's also a lot of stuff. It's a significant project. The good news is, you know, it's not a big construction project, it's plug-and-play, make sure everything works. The first couple of months will be focused on getting the necessary FCC licenses and The first couple of months will be focused on getting the necessary FCC licenses and clearing that hurdle, and once we, they'll, we'll be off and running once we do that. So that intervening couple of month period will be the time that I use to negotiate a lease to be on Industrial Communications Tower in Webster, just over the line on, on Webster Street, to broadcast back across town from, from that area of the town. So, that was a big stride forward. There was, what took so long was that we really wanted to make sure we were going to fit within the budget, we also want, Rich Bowen had a lot of edits to the contract, which were accepted by the other side, so we're in good shape with it. In terms of, we've got a lot of activity posted right now publicly. The job posting for a Community Development Director is still live, still open, we have not received any qualified applicants even at this point, so I'll be dialing for dollars, I think, for the rest of this week. Just trying to activate a network and see if I can find somebody that way, because posting it hasn't generated very much activity at all. In contrast, to re-
Is it with MMA?
It's in the MMA beacon right now, so, and, and on their website, it's been on the American Planning Association website as well, which usually gets, you know, the, the profession is looking. It's a very long list right now of towns that are looking for the same thing as us. So one-
Seller's market.
Yeah, exactly, seller's market, so North Attleboro, Easton, Acushnet, I mean, there's just a lot of towns that are out there looking for people right now.
Those towns aren't as good as Douglas, though.
Well, if you want, if you turn up Douglas to work in Acushnet, you'd need to have your head chucked.
I just finished the same thing.
You could go, you know, you're not going to fit here if you want to go there.
Right. They still make golf balls down.
Yeah, I don't know what they do. In distinction, Lisa's position, the clerk at Douglas Fire Department, I think we are up to nine applications, and I think all nine meet the minimum qualifications. So we'll be interviewing all of them in the next couple of weeks and trying to fill a position in timely fashion so that Lisa can complete the transition over, over here. What else do we have posted? We've posted the RFP for the sale of land authorized by Town Meeting, either it was September or November, I don't remember which meeting it was, and that would be the 17.7 acres that connects Gilboa Street to Northeast Maine. And as you recall, the strategy was, is to use the restricted appraisal as the fourth price, so there is a minimum price in the bid of $380,000, which was the improved cost, improved, the, the value of the property as improved, less the cost to cure its major defect, the defect being you need to cross the Mumford River. So, that was estimated to be about $750,000, so that's deducted from the price of the land. I have a hunch, because, you know, the rule of thumb with land is you buy it when you can, if you can afford it, they ain't making any more of it. They certainly aren't going to be building any more interstate highways, so if you have land on an interstate highway, chances are, somebody really, really wants it, so I won't be surprised to see a lot of activity. I don't know how much, you know, traction there's going to be in 30, 45 days. So the scenario is that the bids will close at 5:00 PM on June 15th, which is a Tuesday, you have a regularly scheduled meeting that night. We'll open the bids publicly here, and there is no scoring, it's done by price. As long as the proposal meets the minimum qualifications, it'll just be done by price. Okay? Are there any-
Any delay, will, we expect to award a high better that night?
I, I would hope so, yeah, unless there's some serious question about a minimum qualification. Other procurements that are currently active, this is an annual event, I know that there are quite a few people that work in these trades or work in these businesses, but John Furno, every year at this time, goes out to bid for highway supplies, whether it's common borrow, gravel of a certain size, highway painting, signs, all of it. And those bid packages are available, they'll be open for another couple of weeks, they get turned in either at the Highway Department or here at the Board of Selectmen's office. Update on our basement. Just when you thought you were out of the woods.
Oh, no.
We finally cleaned up all the soil in the basement, and some of the holes are pretty deep, over six feet deep. They've been backfilled, and the final floor is going to be laid out. There was one place where we encountered groundwater, and the groundwater is now showing contamination. So, the only way to close this project out in a manner that is satisfactory for DEP is to have monitoring wells, and then to bail from the contaminated well for a period of time and hope that you start to get samples that are cleaner and cleaner and cleaner without showing anything in the monitoring wells outside the zone. So that's the strategy going forward. Again, this is an insurance claim, but at this point, the vendor believes we will surpass the insurance milestone of $500,000, so it's an expensive claim. There has been some fascinating reporting done recently-
I know, I know.
-regarding the town's vendor for heating oil. I don't know if anybody's seen this in the Telegram or in a news report on television, but the, a very well-known firm that we buy, won the bid for the town's heating oil contract, is the subject of investigation for overmixing biodiesel into their heating fuel.
Did see that.
And that's concerning, because if the product isn't ready for prime time, it can foul some things up. Now, the state has settled with that vendor for a very large sum of money, but the plaintiffs, the individual plaintiffs are looking for a class action certification, so if we get news of that class action, it really is kind of Maya's call, because it's their, their exposure.
Right.
But I would certainly hope they'd pursue it.
Any other municipalities involved in that, or is it all private?
We don't know. I, I know that the last time I had a conversation with our rep from Maya, he mentioned that there's been another significant oil spill problem in another, I believe it was a regional school district.
Okay.
But whether or not these things are all connected, and whether or not there is any fault or not, are all, you know, speculation at this point.
Causation.
The settlement was your typical admission of no wrongdoing and, and soft-gloving it because they got the money they wanted, but-
He has a pile of money, though.
It doesn't look good right now for the company. Just a friendly reminder to everyone who is running for office, that the public right-of-way is not a place to put a sign. So, I've asked the highway to just, you know, keep a lid on it and make sure that people, you know, follow the rules as best we can. We do not destroy candidate signs, we pick them up, bring them to the highway barn, the candidate is contacted and asked to come pick up their property that's, but, especially if it's, you know, blocking a view. But today, I did notice an elderly gentleman who appeared to be upset about the location of a sign, walking across an incredibly busy street with a measuring tape to see if it was in the right-of-way, and he nearly got himself killed over his obsession with the sign.
He's in principle.
Yeah, well, good for him, but after I passed, I asked highway to take the sign in question out of, of, it clearly was public property because it's in the middle of the road, so the gentleman won't take his life into his own hands for it. One other reminder to the public, you know, fairness burning season is over, so please. I don't know what the chief's stance is on contained, you know, fire pits and all the rest of it, I think we all have that. My hometown is recently passed, Rhode Island, they're called ordinances, passed an ordinance to allow it under certain circumstances, but the idea of getting a big pile of brush in your yard right now and lighting it on fire, your permit doesn't let you do that. And just a reminder to people too, that when you are allowed to burn during the winter and the late winter and early spring, you still have to call the fire department, you still have to get an acknowledgement that that day you can burn. We've had a fair number of brush fires at town this year and illegal burns, and when those winds get going 25, 30 miles an hour, a fire can move very, very quickly through dry material, so it's been something that we've got to keep an eye on going forward. Economic development efforts, I just want to sort of update. In the past, you know, some time ago, I think it was my first year here as town administrator, there was a, a little bit of money set aside at Town Meeting for Economic Development Consulting, and there was a lot of go-around about whether or not it was, had it ever been used and whether it had not been put to good use. We are finally going to, we are going to tap into that $7,500 that's there to, to pay. April Anderson, also known as April Lamro, I don't know which name is the most recent, but it's Anderson Consulting.
She's good.
She's excellent, she was a state official for a long time, was very closely involved with the Campanelli Business Park in Uxbridge, consulting and helping them get their Mass Works grant. So her assistance on the Mass Works grant application is really vital. The contract's $9,500, so, you know, we, we let it out, it's professional services, and the rest of the money's coming from unexpendated funds from the Economic Development Commission that Town Meeting has already approved, so that's how that's being handled. Last but not least, I'm still kind of incredulous, and since I know that Gene often sees things that I don't, and it's good for the town that we both have sets of eyes on it, I got correspondence indicating our American Rescue Program funding, and I couldn't really believe the number, so I brought it into Gene, I said, I think I'm cross-eyed.
Yeah.
Because I had told everybody it was going to be, what, $800,000?
Eight hundred.
It's going to be more on the order of 2.6 million.
Wow.
And two, two injections of 1.3 million, six months apart, probably the first one arriving in June, the other one by the end of the year. These funds must be expended by the end of fiscal '24, and they must be expended for eligible purposes. Now, for the sake of the town, we didn't do a lot of the things, like hazard duty pay or any of those things, so those are eligible. The one thing in there, the one category that is carte blanche, so to speak, is any water or wastewater project, whether it's related to COVID or not, can be funded-
Good.
-with these, because it's viewed as a stimulating activity.
Put out water and sewer improvements.
So we're, we're going to take a good, long, hard look at fire suppression capacity and where our lines are in the worst shape, and approach the water commissioners with a plan and see if, you know, it's acceptable to them. But that's, that's the order of magnitude that really can have a significant benefit to the long-run economic health of the town. First of all, you're hooking people up to a utility that is a brand-new asset, but more importantly, the ratepayers won't be asked to pony up for it, and that's kind of a big deal for, for folks, so-
That can be used for the economic development projects, too?
Well, it all, it comes into what the town might be able to leverage. If, if we're looking at a Mass Works grant to extend water and wastewater service to a new building, our match might be our ARPA fund.
Yeah.
And it goes to a valid project.
Good.
So, that's the thinking right now.
Wouldn't that be beautiful?
Yeah. So, lastly, we have one piece of e-permitting that's left. It's not, it's many pieces, but it's all in one, it's all in the community development. When we signed a contract for e-permitting, included planning, conservation commission, and zoning, we wanted to put all those applications online, make them live, have all inspection reports, everything populating automatically, it's nowhere near as complicated as building permit system. So we're getting started with that. We have 34 forms, that's too many, right? So, it's, you know, several thousand dollars per form to be built out into a fillable form that populates a database, so we're looking to pair that back to, to about 20, 25 forms, you know, but I would hope for 20. Again, it is CARES Act eligible, so as long as we spend the funds before the end of calendar 2021, we'll be okay.
Can you combine forms so that you say-
Well, I think we should, and, and there are some that we just shouldn't even bother putting-
Don't finish X or B section or whatever.
Right. The Planning Board, for instance, has a, a special permit form for the adult entertainment district. Well, that's a very tiny part of town, and the selectmen just sold it for a cannabis store, so it's not going to be an adult entertainment establishment, so we don't need to create a form for that, et cetera, et cetera, but just to keep everybody apprised.
Maybe we should designate another, because if you don't have a designated area, as I recall, they can put it-
Well, I think as long as you have a, a commercial establishment in it-
Yeah.
-it's still eligible.
Is there any land left in our zone, or did we sell all of the land in our zone?
Well, this is kind of a small, small, we sold it all.
I don't, I know what an attorney representing a would-be, you know, adult establishment would probably say to that.
Hmm.
What would you like me to do, build a narrow building, or? With the internet, is the, the bricks and mortar is not so important.
Okay, so this is going to go south quickly. So whilst perambulating the bounds, since I haven't gotten any update on who's doing it.
That was Tim.
How's that going?
Yeah, 216 latitude. Zero, we're right at the equator.
So a little trivia-
Get that off your watch?
Yeah. Little trivia about Douglas is that you actually have two places where you've got a couple of state boundaries that come together, because the boundary of Connecticut is actually north of the boundary of Rhode Island. So, I got fooled into thinking that I was at the tri-state marker and I wasn't, but it's a nice trail, it's a nice trail down. Yeah, no kidding. Well, no, it was on the other side of the, the trailhead sign, tri-state marker, .3 miles that way, so I'll go back.
On High Street there?
That's way out on Southwest Main.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Went by it the other day. It's probably on your watch. You, you've actually walked it, haven't you?
I have hit that, yes.
I mean, the, the entire bounds.
Oh, for your particular project that you had? No, I'm still working on that.
So I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Matt. So do we have any other open session, any topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting?
Not to, it is Mike's night, and I celebrate him. One thing I failed to do, and I can just do it now, I'd ask that our minutes reflect the meridian on our-
Yeah, good idea.
...recognition crystal, just so the archives of Douglas adequately reflect the board sentiment of you, Mike.
Thank you, Tim.
I would agree with that.
Yes.
All right, so with that being said, I would be looking for one of Mr. Bonin's infamous motions.
I'm going to, in the spirit of celebrating, Mike-
I can't, I'm probably going to put me on the spot. All right, I'll make a motion that we enter into executive session for the purposes of litigation, and that we leave executive session for the purposes of adjournment.
I would second that very well-said motion.
Without hesitation.
None whatsoever.
I'd like to go on record that that is the last motion that Mr. Hughes will make as a selectman.
In public.
In public, right, possibly in private.
So, with that motion-
Might run again in four years.
Yeah, he might. With that being made and seconded, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Hughes, aye.
Bonin, aye.
Davis, aye.
Cortez, aye.
Morris, aye.